I think what we're gonna do is, instead of starting with public comment, if everybody's ready to go to the award of scholarships first because I see a lot of people are here, a lot of students are here. You ready to go on that, Carol?
So this evening Tracy and I are standing in for our Chair, Dr. Thomas Kerr. And so he had a few remarks that he would like us to share with you this evening. So again, good evening and thank you for this time to present the 2019 Town of Yarmouth Scholarship Awards to the worthy recipients, some of whom are here tonight. As most people know, I'm Carol Woodbury, the Superintendent of Schools, and Tracy Poe's selectman. Dr. Thomas Kerr is the Chair of our Scholarship Committee, and he's traveling, so he's unable to attend this joy-filled ceremony, but he sends his very best wishes and commendations to all the recipients and their families. First, though, we'd like to thank the committee members for their time, effort, and special insights they brought to the selection and award process. As I said before, Tracy is a member, I am a member, and the three town representatives are Sandy Rubenstein, Danielle Hayward, and Dr. Thomas Kerr. So we're here tonight to celebrate these awards because of the generous donors and the ongoing support of the Town of Yarmouth. Our funding is received from three sources. The first is the Frederick Howe Educational Endowment Fund. The second is from the taxpayers of the Town of Yarmouth, who contribute to this fund through their generous and separate donations on their tax bill. And the third is from the Ellen Chase Scholarship. We thank you all for your support. This year, we were able to distribute $30,000 to 18 deserving students. Over the past 24 years, we have awarded 615 scholarships totaling $398,300. This is a great program. This is a great program the town has developed, and we should all be proud of the ongoing commitment of the town to continue this most worthy civic program. On behalf of the recipients, I thank you all for your participation and support. Each application had specific and often powerful expressions of why the award would make such a difference in both their present situation as well as into the future. As they pursued goals and dreams, our committee reads each application carefully and separately and considers their personal statements essential in the award process. Because need is such an important part of the selection process, we are often impressed by the financial journey these students are pursuing. We too are often touched by statements demonstrating both persistence and a grateful spirit to the town for its contribution. One student wrote, "I know and appreciate what the citizens of Yarmouth have done for me. I know they have provided an excellent school system." Another wrote, "Yarmouth is a town with strong sense of community. We share the values of hard work, and we persevere to rise above the hardship." Another wrote, "I am so thankful to all Yarmouth has given me, and someday I hope to give back." And finally, "Growing up here has made me what I am today, and giving back is something I really want to do." These comments are indicators of lives being moved to make a difference in the world and to make us all realize the scholarship program is a great benefit to our town and to the students we support. And so now, we'll call up the students to receive their awards, and congratulations to all of them and their families for a great journey just beginning. So would you like to read the names?
Sure. If we could ask all the recipients to please continue to stand as we'll do a group picture with everybody after. If you just want to stand over there, that would be great. So our first recipient is Curtis Anderson. Congratulations, I enjoy reading about you in the paper. Jennifer Keim.
Thank you very much, thank you. I'm not Jennifer, of course, but she's up in Wellesley for the Francis Womack Scholarship this evening, so she wanted me to come and thank her for going to the Town of Yarmouth. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Serena Mitchell. Boy, he's gotten big since little, ain't he? Do you want to say some closing words? Thank you all.
So congratulations to all of our students and thanks to our Town of Yarmouth for this great award.
Yeah. Here. Now's a good time to break. Good to see you, Mrs. Liu.
Okay, next matter on the agenda is public comment. Would anybody like to be heard? Yes, ma'am. Identify yourself by name and either address or precinct, please.
Sure, I'm Heather McElroy, Precinct 1. Actually, I'm here representing the Cape Cod Commission this evening and to deliver some invitations to the Sixth Annual One Cape Summit, which is happening July 29th and 30th at the Quasid Inn in Harwich. There's also a Selectmen and Councilors meeting on the morning of the 30th, which we certainly hope you will attend. So I'm just here to deliver invitations, encourage you to come. It's a great opportunity to learn about planning projects across the Cape, both things that the Regional Planning Agency is doing as well as our local communities. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm Don Marino, Precinct 1. It's my understanding we have about a little less than two weeks to get a decision on the monies from the state for the new school, the $44 million. I appreciate that the town suit was dismissed by the judge, so I would urge the council to basically drop the suit. But more importantly is what is the game plan for getting the monies from the state to build the schools? If we don't get the money from the state to build the schools, these old schools, we're gonna end up in our lap. So we have an opportunity, probably for many of us, once in a lifetime, given our ages, to be able to get the state funding for a new modern school, which would greatly improve the education for the kids and the reputation of the town. So the question I have is, when are we gonna know? What is the Selectmen's decision on dropping the suit? And what is the decision to get the $44 million? My understanding is you have to have no outstanding suits. The state says otherwise you can't, they won't accept it. So the question is, when and how are we gonna do it?
My response to you is this. First of all, this is not a question-and-answer period, it's a public comment period for you to voice whatever opinions or concerns you have about town business. It is not for you to make inquiries of the board. Secondly, that matter is a matter of executive session and will not be discussed publicly.
I object to the fact that it is a matter of public session that can't be discussed publicly. This is a public issue.
Sir, you're done. Next.
Hi, my name is Jim Cullen, District 1, and you've seen me here a few times before. Again, heartily suggesting you cease the appeal mechanism of the lawsuit. Secondly, I do think, and I've said this before, the Selectmen owe us, the taxpayers, a plan. What is your next move? Myself and others have tried to do as much research as we can with using readily available public information, and it certainly appears to me as one person that if the town is going to go to a single school system, A, the cost of operating is gonna go up significantly per student; number two, I don't see any way, shape, or form that the replacement for Matiche's can be done for anywhere near $40 or $50 million. Lastly, I appreciate that you're between a rock and a hard place, in a way. I know you're frustrated about the negotiations with Dennis, and that's understandable. If we are going to be a joint school district, there has to be some negotiation. And I have suggested in the past that the two towns, instead of paying money for lawyers to bring and defend a lawsuit, pay for a mediator. And in that regard, I'm sure your attorney has advised you of this, and you're most likely already aware, and maybe you're gonna discuss this later on in the topic on the regional school agreement, but the open meeting law does require you, if you are agreeing to go to mediation, that you need to disclose that, the issues, the process, in open meeting. And further, if there are any decisions to be made in regard to that mediation process, that also has to be disclosed in open session, and that's per Section 21, dealing with executive sessions of the open meeting law. So I didn't want to take for granted that you're already aware of that, but I hope you are, and I heartily encourage you to select mediation rather than continued litigation. You saw all these great students receive scholarships, you know as well as I. They deserve the very best that we can give them in facilities and a modern education. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Sullivan.
Hi, Tom Sullivan, Precinct 1. Good evening. I've had a chance to look over the dismissal by the court. As you know, most of the members know I did attend the court hearing itself. First of all, I want to thank the board for representing the taxpayers, for going through with this. You're representing the voters of the town, and I'm pretty sure that was accentuated with the reelection of two members by a large margin, where people knew where you stood on the lawsuit. So I think the majority of the voters in this town do support what you're doing. I would like also to encourage you to appeal the decision. It's not about the money, it's about votes, and how our vote as a sovereign town was taken away. I've been doing a little bit more research on this, including looking at the ballot that was published on December 4th. December 4th ballot question does not say anything in there about a district-wide vote, as the judge so-called puts in here. There was nothing in on the ballot, it being published by law. I should've said it was a district-wide vote. It did not say that. Second, the judge openly admits there is no case law on this. So how do you make case law? You appeal it. Go to a higher court. The higher courts will actually look into even more. As I said, it's about the vote in the town. Now, the judge makes another mistake, where it states here, Section 16N states the district committee vote to approve the debt must be approved by a majority of the registered voters in member towns. The judge left out the key word in Section N, "each member town." The judge herself didn't do this. All right? So therefore, it is pretty technical, some of it, you have to admit, is way over my head, but it is pretty on 16N the law. The law clearly states "each town." We voted as a sovereign town. Our town clerk certified the vote as a sovereign town. So question is, and the judge doesn't address this, what gives the school committee the right to merge the vote? It's not in Section 16, Chapter 71? It's not in Section 14? It doesn't state that at all, where they can actually merge the vote. Somehow, somewhere, somebody threw in a district-wide vote. After the school committee that I watched last night, we probably will have a district-wide vote, what they decide on the new assessment for the town of Dennis, and that's [inaudible] meaning. That would see, only where that we could see is a district-wide where both towns will get together on this. Now, if they wanted to do that with this question, I don't see where there'd be a problem, but I don't think there's any law that governs that. So I'm hoping that this board will, and the town attorney, because I think that you were discussing maybe with him, that we will go ahead and appeal it. You've got 30 days up until, according to this letter that stated on July, June 11th, I think it's July 12th, did you have to file an intent to appeal? I'm familiar with the appeal, because I was involved with a case that went up. This could take two years. There's no doubt about it. It's a slow process, and it's an entanglement process. In my case, I was involved with a criminal case that still took two years, and it's still going on up in Superior Court. The townspeople have a right. You're representing the townspeople in this, and I think you're doing an excellent job in doing so. Okay? So I want to commend you for the hard work that you've been doing, and hopefully you will continue it and do the appeal. As I said, the money, I hate to use a military term, because I'm retired military, collateral damage. It's unfortunate that this came at the wrong time. But the blame on this doesn't fall on you as a Board of Selectmen. It falls on the school committee for not doing what they were supposed to do under the law, and following advice from the Massachusetts Finance Authority, if I got that right, who gives out the money, the loan. Their member of that committee advised the school committee to go to Section D, and it's in the minutes of the meeting. I have them at home. So if this ever goes to trial, I'm sure that you could, that person could be subpoenaed in to testify on why it told the school committee to go to Section D instead of using Section 16N. These are some things that the judge has not addressed at all. All right? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ma'am.
Thank you. I'm Janet Hively. I'm in Precinct 6 of West Yarmouth. I moved here 10 years ago, and I have been part of the age-friendly development team. And I think of us as being friendly for all ages. I was really excited about the fact that we have more students in the Yarmouth, that we have actually grown young people who want to come to our schools. And the intergenerational programs that we've had with the school district have been exciting for me to be part of, because I'm so strongly in favor of education for all. I want to just comment on the fact, as an active member of the League of Women Voters, that I had encouraged people to come to the regional district election. I went and I voted in favor of what was in front of us, to support the schools. And then I found that my vote hadn't, was, that there was a dispute about the result from the election. I was part, because of the League of Women Voters' participation in the recount. We went through the recount, and we found out again that those who had voted in this regional election had won. Now, of course, there's been a lawsuit, and now there's also been a statement that says that the regional district election was apparently appropriate. That's all that I can get, I'm not a lawyer. But what I do know is that I would urge you to not not to appeal, and to let us move ahead so that we can support the education of our children. We're part here of a group which is formed called Seniors for Public Education, and we will be very supportive of this town in all of its ways, as far as public education is concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Vida?
Basically, I just want to endorse what Tom Sullivan said, and urge you to go ahead and appeal the decision, because there seem to be some serious grounds for doing so, and I hope you're gonna go ahead and do it.
Thank you. Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here tonight, Tom Deaconhall, Precinct 3, representing the Chamber of Commerce. As you know, the Chamber of Commerce was incorporated in 1861, and we've had a wonderful relationship with the town for 58 years, and we would like to continue that as much as possible into the future, way after I am history. So with that, one of our main goals in our mission statement is to educate, advocate, and promote. And we have over 400 businesses, we represent all our citizens and our guests alike, and we have a new business I'd like to bring everybody's attention tomorrow at the Inglewood Bacon Company, which is the 572 Route 28 across from Redface Jack's at 10 o'clock. We have a new entrepreneur starting up a business, and we want to support her as much as possible. On our Facebook page, it says, "Join us for ribbon-cutting ceremony to celebrate the grand opening of the Inglewood Bacon Company. Owner Betsy McNamara provides freshly-made scratch breakfast pastries such as cinnamon rolls, Danish croissants, muffins, and breads." And there'll be complimentary refreshments there, so hopefully everyone will attend and support our business community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. My next matter is the transfer of license of the Grand Cafe. Good evening.
Good evening.
You gentlemen want to introduce yourselves, please?
Jackson Pagway.
Louis Pagway.
First, gonna read a notice into the record, and then we'll proceed with your request. "Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority, has received an application for a transfer of an annual wine and malt liquor in change of hours from Grand Cafe Restaurant, Inc., Manuel Flavio Carci, Landy Manager. The license is being transferred from Louis Pagway to Grand Cafe Restaurant, Inc. The premise located at 80 Route 28 West Yarmouth is a single-story, 2,500-square-foot restaurant building with two entrances and exits. Grand Cafe Restaurant, Inc. is requesting that the hours of operation be changed from the current hours of 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, and 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Sunday, to 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. daily. Hearing will be held on Tuesday, June 18, 2019, in the hearing room at Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth. The Board of Selectmen meeting begins at 6:00 p.m. Written comments will be accepted until 4:30 p.m. Friday, June 14, 2019, in the Selectmen's office at Town Hall. Verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing. The hearing had been scheduled on May 7, 2019, at which time the Board voted 5 to 0 to continue the hearing until June 18, 2019." First matter is, let's talk about the transfer of the license. That's really a ministerial matter. A licensing clerk tells me that, well, actually, quite some time ago, several months ago, that she was trying for a, the last year, to get them to transfer the license, as they requested, and they were missing certain paperwork, so everything seems to be in order for that. The second request on the extension of hours, we have a letter dated June 17 from Phil Magnuson, the liquor license liaison for the Yarmouth Police Department, and he talks about the past violations that were considered by this Board on May 7, and the penalties that were imposed, and his report on what they did in terms of addressing the concerns that the Board had in the penalty phase of that hearing. He says that within a week of the hearing, Jackman Pagway, who's the son of the owner, correct?
Yes.
You're a college student?
Yes.
Okay. Had the Yarmouth rules and regulations translated by an online service into Spanish, and then reviewed and corrected the rules himself, and he's provided Phil with a digital copy of the Spanish rules and regulations. Secondly, he emailed Jackson, Phil Magnuson emailed Jackson a digital copy of the model policy, and Jackson advises that he has had it translated into Spanish, but he has not yet seen the translation. Did you have that, the model policy translated into Spanish?
Yes, I did. He asked me just for the laws and regulations. I didn't know he wanted the policy as well.
Yeah, he wants those, so.
Okay, I'll send it to them.
Have to get those to him, okay.
Okay.
And then in late May, he said, "I spoke to Jackson by phone, and he indicated that Manuel Carci may be leaving the Grand Cafe, but later on, I guess, he's not leaving." Is that correct?
Yes, it was a family issue, but we all talked, and we talked to Phil about it, and we are okay now.
So is Mr. Carci staying on?
Yes, he's staying.
Okay. And I think that's important, because as between him and your father, he's better-versed in English, correct?
Yes.
All right. Then he said, Phil Magnuson says, "I met with Louis Pagway, Jackson, and Manuel Carci at the Yarmouth Police Department on June 5, and they stated that Manuel Carci would be staying with the Grand Cafe, and that he was spending 30 to 40 hours a week at the Grand Cafe." Is Mr. Carci gonna spend at least 30 hours to possibly 40 hours in managing?
Yes, he is.
Okay. And then he- Then he mentions that you go back to college in early September. You're going to be working until that time, and you're going to be looking for an English speaker to hire when he leaves?
Yes, that's what we talked about, yeah.
All right. And there's two or three other employees, but they do not speak English. Is that correct?
They do not, but they understand the basics. And like I said, we translated the rules and regulations. I explained to them. But we're currently looking for people who speak both English and Spanish.
Okay.
Most of our customers do not speak English or...
You have a lot of Spanish-speaking customers?
Yes, customers.
Right. All right. He said he engaged Manuel Carci because he was able to answer in English. And it was clear that Manuel had read the rules and regulations, had a general, if not...if not...if incomplete understanding. He understood the rules, but perhaps not completely. Manuel said he would give an intoxicated person a glass of water. He's given an example. Manuel said he would give an intoxicated person a glass of water and call a cab, but he didn't mention calling the police if necessary. He seemed to have a good understanding of the hours of operation, serving minors and purchasing alcohol from distributors only, which were some of the concerns that were addressed in that violation. Overall, he says, "I would assess his understanding of the rules and regulations as adequate and And Officer Windberg, Erica Windberg, on June 7 did a compliance check, and she reported that their record-keeping and training was in compliance. There were no violations and no follow-up inspection was required. So it seems from this that, you know, you've tried very hard to correct the problems that you were in here about before. And I guess the reason he sent this to us is for our consideration on whether or not to extend the hours. So we'll start with questions from the board. Do you have any questions or comments, Mark?
No.
Norm, do you?
I'm all set up, satisfied.
Okay. How about you, Tracy?
Yeah, I'm just curious as to why the 1:00 a.m. request. What is your...what is your plan? You just serving food until 1:00 a.m.?
No, sometimes we have people who come in almost at closing time, and they stay there. They want to have a drink. They come after work. So...but we can't serve them alcohol. We tell them we only have the license till 11:00 p.m. Thus, we lose those customers because they come there to have something to drink, like I said. That's why we are trying to get the license for 1:00 a.m.
Okay. We don't have a lot of restaurants that serve alcohol, I don't think, that are open until 1:00 a.m. without some type of entertainment.
I think most of them have the right to stay open till 1, but they don't. But they don't. I mean, they're not required to.
Typically, they have entertainment and other items. Is there any requirement on this change for notification or insurance or...
On the...just the...on the transfer, the only thing that they would have to do, I suppose, is...
And maybe they already did previously. It's just not here. I just like to see that the new business name is insured.
Do you have a current...well, they probably didn't transfer the insurance yet because the license isn't transferred yet. They probably wouldn't be able to do that until we act. You're going to talk to your insurance company once the license is transferred to make sure that the new business entity, which is a corporation, is named as an insured on the policy?
Is the insurance already is informed about that? And do you just...
Okay, make sure you follow up on that. That's important because if, you know, a corporation in the law is like a different person. It's a separate entity. And you'd have to have the policy insuring the business.
I'll look into that, yes.
Okay, so make sure you talk to them about that.
Okay, I'll look into that.
All right. Anyone else? All right, let's take these separately. Do we have a motion to approve the transfer of the liquor licenses requested?
Do we have to go to the public?
Oh, you're right. Anyone from the public want to be heard on this? As expected, no one? Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. We have a motion to approve the transfer of the license.
So I'll move.
All right, Norm makes a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Tracy seconds it. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All right, so you...the board voted to allow the transfer of your liquor license, so you're all set there. So now we'll move on to the question of whether the board wants to allow you to extend your hours of operation as you've requested. Do we have a motion to that effect?
Yes, I move that we allow them to change their hours of operation from the current hours, which are 8 to 11 Monday to Saturday and 10 to 11 Sundays, to 11 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. daily.
1:00 a.m.
1:00 a.m. Did I say p.m.? Okay, thank you.
11 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. daily. Okay, so it's Norm's motion. Do we have a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mark will second it. Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, so we have approved your request to extend your hours. And just make sure that with your manager, if there's any change of managers, you notify our licensing clerk, okay?
Okay, no problem.
And make sure you take care of that insurance matter. And other than that, you're all set.
Yeah, like I said, I'll look into that. I just got back from college when the first hearing was issued, so I'll look into everything about that matter.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, next matter is a change of manager from Blue Rock.
Good evening, Board of Selectmen. My name is Michael Allen. I am the vice...Executive Vice President of Operations for Red Jacket Resorts under the Davenport Companies. I am requesting this evening the transfer of the liquor license from the former general manager to myself. I've gone through all the requirements, and I ask for your approval this evening.
Okay. Have you...did you attend the seminars, the seminars that Officer Magnuson puts on?
I was in the seminar last week, yes, sir.
The one on Tuesday?
On Tuesday.
Okay. All right, that's good.
I've also updated my tips, and I've gone through all the requirements, yes, sir.
Okay. And, excuse me?
That's in here.
Okay. So is there anything else you want to say or...
No, I'm just asking for your approval. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone on the board have any questions?
No.
We don't have to go to the public on this. This is just a formal...
I hope his resume is in here. He's been in hospitality for a while. I make a motion we approve the transfer.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? All right, Michael, you're all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time this evening. I appreciate it.
Have a great season.
Thank you.
Sorry the hearing took so long. Next matter is a summer seasonal operational update. Who's going to do that?
I've asked that the affected departments come forward. I sent you a memo on that last week.
That's one of them, yeah.
Public Works, Community Services.
Pat and Jeff and Amy.
Yeah.
Where have I seen Amy?
Amy. This is great.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. I'll let the rest of the table introduce themselves as well.
Pat Armstrong, Director of Community Services.
And Amy Howell, Assistant Rec Director.
We bring Mrs. Howell before you tonight to introduce her as the new Assistant Director of Recreation. She just started with us or in the midway through last week, came right into OSHA training, so we knew she and everyone would be safe under her care. And considering a lot of the lifeguard and summer activities at the beaches will fall under her responsibility, we wanted to bring her forth tonight and introduce her to you. Many of you know her already, I know.
I'm very happy to see Amy be working for the town. I've known Amy since she was a young kid.
She's still young.
And she was one of my soccer players and a great athlete and just a fabulous young person, and I'm very happy to have you here.
I'm excited to be here.
And the other parties that we want to introduce as well as the Natural Resources Team is here. There may be some questions this evening about the activities that they've been involved in, and we'll talk about that briefly. But Carl and his team are here to answer questions as well. What I'd like to start out by saying is, related to that, the Natural Resources has been the towns represented to some regional discussions about white shark activity, what the other towns are doing in that regard. As part of those discussions, there's some additional signage that we'd like to seek your approval tonight to put up at the beaches. That information is in your packet that has come out of those discussions. If you have more detailed...
Saw that.
Detailed questions about that, I'm sure.
Kind of jumped off the page.
Certainly.
Doesn't jump out of the water.
Color...the color scheme is...shows you that there's a little...little concern there.
That's the friendliest shark we picture we could find.
So they could probably answer some additional questions about those discussions and that activity if you'd like. What I'd like to say is the Building and Grounds Team, primarily the Parks Team of that division, has been busy getting the beaches ready. Some of their primary activities, in addition to sweeping parking lots, lining parking lots, raking beaches, making sure that they're ready for the season, has been they've replaced the boardwalk, all the boards associated with Seagull Beach Boardwalk and the porch area. So that is a project that came in on budget and on time and was done this spring within the constraints of the timing before the plovers nested and all of that activity happened. That was a success. The other activity I'd like to highlight is we've done a stabilized shoulder on Center Street as it leads up to the Bass Hole. That's an area for pedestrians to get off the roadway and walk. It's using a stabilized soil base. It's a product that we haven't used before, but we're piloting in that location. And hopefully, if that's a success, we can use it in some other areas for walking enhancements and other surfaces. With that said, I'll turn it over to the Recreation Team, which has some exciting programs planned as well that might want to update you on.
Want to go or you want me to? Yeah, yeah, I thought you'd want me to. You get to talk next time. We're very excited this summer to be able to recruit and retain 40-plus lifeguards. We've had some challenges in the last few years of recruiting and having guards available, and I don't know why, but they're here and we're very excited. We have a couple from Middle Eastern countries that came in on J-1 visas as a secondary support system, so we'll be retraining them in American Red Cross Life Saving. They are coming in with training from their country of origin, so that'll be a new addition and will be helpful with some of our language challenges that we find at our beaches during the summer. Our guards have been on duty since Memorial Day weekend, and will continue on weekend coverage through the 16th of June and as of Monday, the 17th, which is...no, no, Monday the 24th, sorry. Monday, the 24th, will be going on full-time. Yeah, they weren't out there in the rain today, so I had to think about it where they supposed to. No, they'll be going on on the 24th, which is a savings and helpful considering the increase in the wages this year caused by the increase in minimum wage and how that impacts all the way up. So it's good budget-wise to wait a little longer. And with the rain all week, I'm not so worried about the school being out on Wednesday and not having guards on Thursday and Friday. We'll be in good shape. Also, we have some new beach directors, so we'll be going through a transition summer in our hopes and that it will be as safe as always, but some new initiatives will be started. In terms of special activities, I know that there was a push a couple of years ago from Selectmen Post and others. They'd like to see our beaches utilized more as family-friendly, all full-day activity areas and not just till 3:30, 4:00 in the afternoon. So we did some expansion of programming that will continue. The free public libraries are up and running. There's one at Bass River Beach and one at Seagull Beach. They get a great amount of activity and switching on and off of the books. The librarians are thrilled to volunteer to be the ones to refill the libraries on a weekly basis so they can get out of the library and go to the beach for an hour or so. And we're getting great feedback about that. The weekly summer concert series on Monday evenings at Parker's River will continue. That will be sponsored for the first month of July through the Arts Foundation. And then the second month, it is always sponsored through the Yarmouth Chamber of Commerce. That lineup is available online, and we'll have some great bands and performances this summer. And we expect up to 400 people a night at Parker's River Beach enjoying the music in that wonderful vista, much to the chagrin of those who like to sneak in and park at the beach to go to the Skipper Restaurant when we have 400 at the concert. Parking gets a little tight over there, but I don't mind. I like to see all that activity and that being used. Our free movie series will continue both at the beaches and at the parks. We'll kick off on the 3rd with Goonies at Smugglers and then end with Spider-Man on the 14th at Homer Park. And in between, we'll do many Disney family-oriented movies except for the traditional Jaws movie, which will be at the beach this summer again. People enjoy that very much. We have Gaga tournaments scheduled at Parker's River Beach. The Gaga, I think I've talked to you about Gaga before, and there's a lot of use to it. The kids play it at school. They play it at camps. They are very familiar with it. And so our guards are all being trained in how to play and oversee the Gaga pit, and we're getting some great responses, especially at Parker's River, a really high-impact family beach. Many of the rental properties there, people walk to the beach, they have every year, and there's lots of kids and many generations, so this will get some good use. And we're not going to be moving it around as we did in years past. We're going to keep it at Parker's River. So if you want to play Gaga, you can go there. And so we won't move it around. It's much easier. It's a little cumbersome, and we can damage it by moving it, so we prefer not to. Amy will be picking up the beach soccer at South Middle Beach. Soccer is her sport of choice. Thank you, Coach Stone. And we'll be doing that on Tuesday evenings and expect a good turnout. Again, these are all free of charge, all of these activities. And then the Natural Resources Department has been working with the Mass Division of Marine Fisheries, and they'll be putting on a free fishing derby on the fishing deck at Smugglers Beach on August 13 from 10 to noon, and then a second grouping from 12:30 to 2:30. Our volleyball courts at Bass River are used by different local groups, but we've had a regional group called Spike U is the name of the company, and they're running three different volleyball tournaments. One was earlier this month, the 22nd of this month, and then in August. And then as other opportunities come up, we'll be overseeing and expanding programs as we can find the appropriate staffing and funding to make that happen.
And there's one item I'd like to add. Pat reminded me when she said Gaga Ball, excuse me, that there is another interesting game, Pickleball. Those courts will be anticipated to be completed this week.
That's correct.
It's another activity that can be expected this summer as well.
Jeff did an excellent job to get that going forward. It's excellent. Thank you.
Okay, questions from the board? Mark?
Jeff, Pat, Amy, and Carl, thank you for being here tonight. Amy, welcome. I looked at the sign. It looks fine, so I don't have any issues with it. And thanks for your support. Well done. Thank you.
Norm?
I don't have any questions. Thank you and welcome. Yeah, I wish we didn't have to post signs. Where are they going to be posted on? Is it right at entry to all the beaches or is it going to be...
I think Carl could give you a better answer on that.
Like that station or where? Carl's coming to answer that. Carl's the shark man.
Bill's the shark man, too.
Yes, Ashley, for those of you who don't know, Officer Bill Benetti, he's my field supervisor sitting in the back. He is our representative to the task force and does attend all those meetings. We are probably looking at posting these signs at the main entrances out onto the beach so as they pass mainly going onto the beach, they'll see these signs. And these signs are the ones that are...most communities are using same color scheme, same wording, with just a different emergency number on the bottom. same wording, with just a different emergency number on the bottom.
There's, I just had a question about it in terms of liability. Is this one of those things, like when you acknowledge it, you accept responsibility for what happens? Is there any, has there been any discussion about that?
There has been some. We spoke to town council, he was generally fine with that. I mean, I think you heard earlier in the season, there was some interesting commentary out of Wellfleet's town council, but, so we passed along to Jay, and he was comfortable with the general posting of what we're doing.
There's no swim at your own risk?
I think if we were feeding the seals down there, we'd probably have a liability problem, but there are no seals.
One of the additional signs that we do have that we were going to be posting and pass out, they've been used in the past, let me just pass them out to you and we can discuss them.
Just to let everybody know, we've been contacted by a few newspaper and TV outlets about what the official Yarmouth policy is relative to the white shark situation, so we've been monitoring it since last year.
Thank you.
And so I thought, one of the reasons why I wanted to bring this to you for, you know, a vote of endorsement, if you will, on the signage is so that I can publicly speak to that topic when we get inquiries again. I actually just had one special request. I was hoping that within the summer series of movies, there might have been a, an Orca movie to bring in some friends.
Oh, the killer whale movie.
Yeah, something like that.
Well, there's swimming with dolphins as well that we could bring in. I'll look into that, sir.
All right, thank you.
Free Willie, there's plenty of them.
Are you, are you thinking that you would be posting these together?
Correct.
All right, that makes sense.
One of the things that we've done before, because we have so many other hazards in our waters, we thought, you know, we would kind of put this out there, you know, that, you know, we do have heavy surf, we have currents, we have jellyfish, you know, et cetera, and of course the sharks. And this sign does use air at your own risk, which I think covers your concern.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you all for being here. I don't know if Amy wants to take a minute and talk about her, her background a little bit. I know that, as Pat said, most of us know her, but she comes with an extensive recreation background. We're very lucky to have you. I don't think the boards had the opportunity to see that. Sorry to put you on the spot, but I...
That's okay. I graduated with a rec degree, went to the Cape Cod YMCA, and then I've been with the town of Plymouth for the last 12 and a half years, so.
In recreation?
In recreation. I've moved up to the program director, was my last position that I held in Plymouth there. So I'm excited to be here, back home.
Yes, back home, that's nice. Thank you. I think all these programs are great. Anytime we can make progress in, in growing any of the programs, I think it makes a big difference. I, my only, well, two things. The summer concert series are amazing. They're so well-attended and a great free item for people, whether they're residents or not, to enjoy. The movie series has been very well-attended as well. I'd love to see maybe a date night, maybe an adult movie, you know? Maybe we have a date night one night, I don't know. Not sure I'd go.
Any movie to talk about?
I'm not sure who I would get to supervise that particular activity, Mrs. Post, but I could look into it for you.
And...
You could maybe share later a few titles that you think would be appropriate for date night?
Okay.
Thank you.
And the Gaga tournaments, you mentioned just briefly about the lifeguards managing that. So how do you envision that in terms of if they're, you know, I guess I'm concerned about their responsibility with their eyes not being on the water, how that would...
We have many levels of lifeguards, and one of the levels is a junior lifeguard, that's 15. And our junior lifeguards are there on the beach to observe and assist with first aid, but they can't participate in a rescue actively, so they'll be assigned to Parker's on those days that Gaga is up and running.
Perfect.
Excuse me, can you explain what a Gaga tournament is for those of us who don't know?
Gaga is a type of dodgeball that was created in Israel, probably 15, 20 years ago, and it is, the actual play is contained within a hexagonal-shaped containment that's about three feet high, and the kids climb into this. The one we have at the beach is inflatable, so it's like a pool without a bottom, right? And they get inside, and they have a, the old playground balls, the kind of bouncy playground balls. And the goal of Gaga is to not be hit by the ball from the knees down. If someone hits you from the knees up, you're safe. You can only be hit by the knees down. And so, and the ball, and there's one ball, and it's pushed across, and as you get hit with the ball, you leave. And then if it gets going on and on for a while, then you throw in two or three more balls, and then there's all sorts of balls. And as the kids get hit, they're out, and then the winner is the winner, and then they go back in and they start again.
I think we should have a Tuesday night meeting there, live?
I thought Gaga might be a good team building, because you can't hit above the knees. It's been well-received by many of our community, and kids actually come to Flax for the summer for a week so that they can play Gaga. And we have two permanent courts on, on the property of Flax, and then this inflatable one is used on rain days. It can handle probably 30 children at a time in a very small confined area, so it's a great use of space and activity.
How about adults? Adults allowed now?
I haven't seen the adult one yet, Trace, but I can see that there's a need for more adult recreation programs. Maybe a traditional dodgeball might be good for this. We'll, we'll work on that. I'm afraid. Thank you very much.
Pat, I remember from the days of the many rec meetings I attended, we used to always have a challenge of adequately staffing our beaches with lifeguards. That seems to be a challenge we've had for a good many years, and I noticed that we have, we anticipate 43. Will that be enough to kind of fill all the positions you have in mind, or would we still kind of be a little bit thin at that number? I, I don't know what number would be your desired number if you, if you had your, your way about it.
You know, back in the day, we used to tell the kids you work five days a week, and that's it, and here's your schedule, and, you know, we'll give you one day off and a weekend in case someone's getting married, but besides that, you're working your on. That doesn't happen anymore in the world. They've got so many other things going on that our staff now, we have full-timers, we have weekend coverage only, we've got people attending school during the week in the summer and coming down waking Saturdays and Sundays, and we love that because the full-timers would like those weekend days off. So that 43, back in the day when our hair wasn't as thin, was the number we needed to cover all 13 beaches that we covered at that time. Since then, we've taken back our coverage, and so there's certain beaches we do not staff that we used to. Colonial Acres, Bayview, Englewood, those areas are not staffed and haven't been for probably eight to 10 years now. Freshwater ponds are always a concern. Dennis Pond always has a guard when we have enough, so we feel we'll have enough for Dennis Pond now. Sandy Pond, not so much anymore. We found that the attraction there wasn't great, but Flax, we use the beach staff as the lifeguard staff for the camp. So we bring in two or three lifeguards from the beach staff with a beach, with the waterfront director who's full-time at Flax Pond, and they work that system and make, and have that coverage. So they're two weeks in at Flax, and then the other 10 weeks of the summer, they're on the beaches. So we, until it gets to be August 10th and the kids start going back to school, and so many are athletes, so those athletes return for their preseason athletics at college and high school, we expect to have, I believe it's eight from what I saw, eight to 10 beaches covered. And those that aren't, we have beach directors that are traveling around, and we do have access with police, so if there's a call of a concern at a beach, we have three vehicles on the road. The Explorer that I drive normally is assigned to the beaches for the summer. Amy, you actually will have that this summer. We have the big truck, we have the old 1997 Ford Ranger that's back on the road and running, and we have George Lillard's old car that's on the road as well. So we have people about and around on the north and south side in case we get calls, but we hope to cover most of the beaches.
Are we competitive in terms of what we're paying?
We're competitive until a week before they start hiring, and then the other town's up there, they're somehow. But we are definitely competitive. We start at 1350. We're not the lowest town, but we're not the highest, because we don't have open surf and the kind of surf conditions that you find farther down Cape. So Wellfleet, Truro, they have a much higher rate of pay, but they have actually professional guards that are here in the summer and then go to California or work for the national parks and do that as well, so.
I want to turn for a moment to the shark man. These safety tips that will be posted, this arise out of, out of some kind of Capewide Conference that, that you folks have had, and if so, who, who put that together and who attended on behalf of Yarmouth?
Sure, I'll let Bill.
Yep. So I've been attending since last fall. It's, it's a working group, and all the meetings that I've attended have been at the Chatham Shark Center. So it's the Atlantic White Shark.
Conservation.
Yeah, thank you. And members are Dr. Greg Skomel from Mass Division of Marine Fisheries, so he's the one who's doing all the research and collecting all the data from the state's buoys that, the acoustic monitoring that picks up on tagged sharks. We've also, at Dan's request, have reached out to a company that deploys real-time buoys. However, you know, that comes at a cost. The state has agreed to deploy one of their buoys here in Yarmouth to receive some data, but it's not real-time. Like, we wouldn't see the results and see what type of activity we have until after the season. So besides that, it's all the other towns, mostly towns on the outer Cape that are represented in this working group. They might, they have a little different scenario out there. In fact, the signs they're using are a bit more aggressive than what we've suggested.
Oh, they are, they're different?
Yes, and certainly we could utilize the same signs, but they, they kind of speak to some of the incidents that they've had there, the fatalities and so on, or the fatality, but speak to the two attacks that occurred this summer. The language that we use did come from the discussions that have been had in this working group. The safety tips have been a collaborative effort, so that's where we were able to get that language.
Okay. I know last, I think it was last summer, there was sharks sighted over in the bay in Dennis. Have any, have any sharks been sighted in, over in the north side in Yarmouth? Do you know?
Well, I, not for sure in Yarmouth, but we know that they've been spotted in Barnstable and Sandy Neck and out in Dennis. So I'm certain that there are sharks on the north side, speaking to, during the summer bathing season, speaking to the charter boat captains that are fishing out there. It's a daily occurrence now that white sharks are biting off fish that are being reeled in by their customers, you know, striped bass that are being reeled in. Used to happen occasionally, now it happens, according to them, daily. So, and it, from what the experts say, the sharks that are in the Cape Cod Bay may be smaller, maybe, it may be more of a nursery, maybe juveniles. However, you know, they're going, because, because they're, they are smaller in length and going after small fish rather than the seals, however, those juveniles could still pose a, a human threat. So that would be an area that we would, you know, look into deploying some of these clever buoys, you know, if we were to move forward with that. The other concern, the south side beaches during the bathing season, I'm told, shouldn't be as much of a concern, because our water during the bathing season in the south side beaches is perhaps a little bit above, actually, the preferred temperature range for the white sharks. It's no guarantee that they won't, but it seems as though they're more apt to be on our south side beaches, say in October, when they're migratory and when the temperatures decrease just a little bit to their sweet zone. And also, we have a lot more food migrating at that time, too, large schools of Men Haden. One concerning thing that we're seeing is we're seeing more gray seals in Yarmouth than we ever have.
Really?
Well, yeah.
Where are you seeing them, on the north side or south side, or both?
Um, we've been seeing them on the south side, actually, in Lewis Bay all last fall. We were seeing them in there with the schools of Men Haden, and then we did have a confirmed shark sighting, which was an injured Mako. However, there definitely showed that there was a shark in there behind the food. So the concern with Lewis Bay is that we still have activity going on there that time of the year, in October, you've got people in small sailboats and, and things of that nature, whereas at least the bathing beaches in October aren't as much of a concern.
How much, how much are those buoys?
Yeah, so, you know, we've been following the development on this topic, and we talked preliminarily to the manufacturer about what a potential deployment could look like. Part of the challenge that, which drives the cost is the communication ombre, because what you need to have to be successful in this event is real-time data coming back. So, you know, if there's a satellite connection, it's significantly more expensive. You're talking many tens of thousands of dollars. But the way it was explained to me, like particularly in Lewis Bay, is the buoy, when it gets dropped in, it's, it essentially sends out like in an arcing pattern, an electric, a surveillance net, if you will. So that seemed to be, of all the different places around the Cape, not a bad place that, because it's kind of contained, whereas in the down Cape with the National Seashore beaches, there isn't the same kind of scenario. It's too broad of a beachfront to address. So we're going to continue to talk to the manufacturer. I am, it is of interesting note that the state's going to begin tagging sharks in the bay this year. That's supposedly the preliminary plan. But I think the, the problem that, you know, in talking to many of the people that have been doing this in other parts of the world, is that without the real-time information, what we're picking up now is the shark that traveled by some days ago.
Yeah.
Or longer, but what was found in other parts of the world when they started tagging them is that, that the, there's a large number that goes untagged, and that's what we're trying to quantify to some degree. So the, by, by having the boat patrols out there, we can help pick up some of the anecdotal evidence, and I, and I concur. I, you know, the managers talk up and down the Cape about this, and we've, we've heard in the same group, the same problem with the charter fishermen, talking about the behavior inside the bay itself. So these are all prudent measures, and if it looks like we can get a deployment pilot for you to consider at a future date, we would definitely bring that to you.
That'd be great to talk to Barnstable, too, because I think both communities would benefit from that. What's the radius that it picks?
Well, so I, I think if I remember correctly, a set of buoys, maybe it's three or four in a set, will go out to about a net of about 500 yards altogether. So the idea behind it is it's connected to a computer algorithm that tracks the size of whatever it is inside the water, and it's been, it's been calibrated in other parts of the world to, you know, say, set it for, identify everything that's about six, six feet or longer. And as it continues to monitor what's inside that electronic net, eventually the computer system gets enough confidence that it could be a shark predator, for instance, and that's essentially how it goes. So this technology continues to evolve as they've used it in other parts of the world, so the algorithms get better and better at detecting it. But I'm not going to kid you, it's, part of the problem is technology. And having a, a good fiber backfeed at the beach would be very helpful to make it cost-effective.
Speaking of technology, I think one of the issues that they had in the lower Cape scenario was the lack of cell...
Correct, and we have the same problems at some locations, and if it's...
That's something I think that we need to directly work with all the cell phone carrier companies to make sure that we have emergency cell phone service in any of those potential beaches.
But the team, they've been on it, they've been going to the meetings, and, you know, one of the things I wanted to make sure that Yarmouth is represented and that we're in, you know, that whatever it is that the group decides they do, we go together on this topic, because I think it's important that for both residents and visitors, they see a consistent message across the board. I wouldn't want to be the town that stuck their head in the sand, if you will.
Can I just add, add two things? The, the algorithm is awful. Also, monitor the motion of the fish. So a porpoise and a dolphin swim with their tails up and down, where a shark is a side-to-side motion, so they can actually measure that and see even by size, but also by motion, if it's a shark, and evaluate it that way. There's another group of, that meets that are the Cape Cod Beachmen. There's another group of, that meets that are the Cape Cod Beach Managers, and they're not the natural resource and, and professionals from Mass Division of Fisheries, but there are your local recreation and departments that are running the beaches up and down the Cape from Falmouth to Provincetown, and so we meet as well, getting information from the group that Bill's been participating in and making sure that Dan and the managers know. And we've all talked about these signs as well and are very aware of what's going on, so to make sure, we're training our staff now in, to stop the bleed, so if someone were to be bitten, we have the appropriate equipment on the beach to immediately address that concern. We are dealing with our local fire departments now and doing more mock rescue drills with that type of an incident occurring, where we would do mostly lost child drills or someone with a physical or medical issue. Now we're actually talking about if there were an attack. There was a cub seal in the mouth of Parker's River on Saturday morning, observed and crowned by the guard, so there was, there are seals always, and always have been, they come up and rest on the shore when they get tired, so we've always had seals along the whole south side. The north side only has Bass River, I mean Bass Hole, and to get to Bass Hole in the swimming area, you'd have to go through the channels and, and with, between the tidal shift, you wouldn't find a lot of opportunity for seals and sharks to be in Bass, Bass Hole, and that's really our only swimming beach on the north side of town.
Dolphins and that whole Chase Garden Creek, there was dolphins, surprisingly, they made their way in there.
Right, and they, and they stranded.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we've had strandings. The, the one thing that, you know, we need to keep in mind on the north side is that we do have those extensive flats that go out over a mile. So does it mean that it would never happen? I would, I would never rest with that, but the likelihood is that, you know, these animals don't like to come into shallow water. Sharks really prefer deeper water. Will come into shallow water to feed, like we're seeing on the outer Cape where the seals are close to shore, but it's just a short distance to deeper water. You know, we can go out two, three miles on the south side and only have 30 feet of water, and they really prefer, you know, quick access to 50 feet and greater. So, you know, we are looking into this technology. It is extremely expensive. We're probably preliminary, just getting ballparks, 250,000 to 500,000 over, you know, a five-year or less period, depending on how long we decide to do a contract. And a lot of it, you know, some of the technology can only work in 50 feet of water, so some of the technology may not be able to be used in some of our areas. That's why we feel it's so important to work with our neighboring communities, which have some frontage, to start getting some real-time. Also, New England Aquarium is going to be putting out some of the acoustic receivers in Nantucket Sound as well, to try to get a better coverage of Nantucket Sound, to see what there is moving through Nantucket Sound. And the one seal here and two seal there isn't like the, you know, 50, 100, multiple thousands of seals out on the outer Cape. So it's not, you know, we don't have a massive food source in here, as Bill said. We do see a little more activity in Nantucket Sound in the late fall as we're getting some of these bigger schools migrating south. And the, the shark that was seen in close last fall was injured, so, and it actually died two days later after being seen close to shore. So it wasn't a healthy animal that was out doing what they normally would do, because they wouldn't normally be in that close.
Carl, you know, most of the efforts seem to be toward detection and gaining a greater understanding of their, their patterns and so forth. And, you know, is there any effort to attract them away? You know, like chum pots, kind of, kind of approach, I mean?
Yeah, I, I think a lot of the experts get very concerned about doing something like that, because now you're drawing the animals in.
Or out.
Or, or out. But then they congregate in that area and you may be getting sharks from offshore coming into these chum, chum patches. So I think that's why you've, you've been hearing an awful lot about acoustics, you know, some audible projections. Just recently, there was a meeting at the Barnstable County. As a deterrent, pretty much sending out orca calls for, for deterrent. So there's a lot of interest in that, and a lot of people are looking at that, and we ought to be getting some good information over the next year or so on some of those other options that, that might be out there.
Okay.
You know, sharks have been here forever. So seeing blue sharks in Cape Cod Bay have been a commonplace for a very, very long time. Now we're starting to see some juvenile great whites mixing in.
Okay, so we need a, do we need a motion on this, on the signage?
No, I just, well, you know, you could have endorsed the signage, you know, because it's like a, a town, town-owned property and town signage, and it's a little bit different than what we've seen in the past, so if you could give us a vote to authorize that.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the posting of the caution signs for sharks at our public beaches.
And there's, there's another one for other potential hazards as well. I think maybe you want to add that one, Norm?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, anyone opposed? All right, so that unanimously carries. Thank you very much. And Amy, again, congratulations, it's great to see you back.
Good to see you.
Thanks for the update.
Yeah, hope we have a great summer season.
Have you? I'm exhausted already.
Okay, next item is another type of hazard. Nitrogen hazard, Yarmouth Hazard Mitigation Plan. You're not going to talk about sharks, I take it?
I am not going to talk about sharks.
What other things do we have to be concerned about?
Nothing, we're, Yarmouth's doing a very good job of addressing the mitigation items from the Hazard Mitigation Plan that was approved in 2017. But part of the monitoring for the plan is to have an annual review by the Hazard Mitigation Team, which is made up of a wide number of town staff, including Public Works, Highway, Health, Conservation, Planning, Police and Fire, and I have to apologize to Carl because I did not include the DNR in the memo, and they, Carl was very instrumental in putting together the Hazard Mitigation Plan. So we conducted.
While you say that, you should let the people know that I watch, and you're Kathy Williams, our town planner.
Yes, I am, I'm not infamous, I'm not.
Well, there might be some people out there wanting to know, who's this lady that's scaring us?
I'm sure the Tom's got my name right up there, Kathy Williams, Town Planner. So we met on February 13th and went over the different 30 mitigation action items that have been contained in the Hazard Mitigation Plan, and you'll see in the memo, there's a spreadsheet that identifies the action item with also an explanation of the status of how we're doing. I wasn't planning on going through this unless you had some specific questions about it.
I strained my glasses.
Yes, sorry.
No, it's very difficult.
Yes, as I get older, I find it a little bit more difficult.
Do you just want to highlight it generally?
I, I think it's just kind of showing you with the different explanations that we are making some progress towards meeting some of these mitigation items, whether it's providing additional educational materials on the website and here at Town Hall and in the libraries. The Fire Chief continues going, is being co-chairman of the Barnstable County Regional Emergency Planning Committee, so that's important. He's keeping us up to date on all of that. We did recently complete the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, and I just submitted the final report to EEA yesterday. So maybe next year when we start looking at this, we'll start incorporating some of those items within the, the Hazard Mitigation Plan as well as the, the action items. But there's a, there's a wide range of things that we have taken a look at and trying to address. And also with regard to repetitive loss properties, we sent out a letter to the different property owners identifying some ways that they might be able to help, help them with different programs, as well as taking a look to see whether there was any road drainage issues that were causing issues with repetitive loss properties. We didn't find any, but that work has been done so that we now know that we're not causing any problems for these different properties. So that we went through all 30 and identified what we had done. Like I said, an annual review was required, but also an annual presentation to the Board of Selectmen, also allowing for some type of public comment as well was part of the plan program. And there's many of the team members here today who are sitting behind.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or comments, Norm?
Just, you know, the point of contact, in case of issues arise in any of these situations, I mean, is, is there a central point, or is it typically going to be the Police and Fire Department, you know, for some of these?
I think typically if people are identifying a problem out in the community, it would probably be Public Works, Police or Fire, if it was a situation that needed immediate, that type of thing.
All right, thank you. All right, any other questions?
Tracy?
Thank you for all this, it's always a, when you're dealing with this and the regulations, it's always a moving target, but one thing you said is you have to be before the Board annually and have public, take public input. Is this the opportunity for public input, or was that previously met?
No, this is just if anybody who's here at this presentation wanted to make a public comment, it would be good if the Board would ask.
My only question really is, is where in meeting these goals would you say your biggest maybe challenges? And are there things that you need our help with trying to get these things accomplished?
I think some of the, the challenges are simply having the town staff time in order to address some of these issues or to investigate some of these issues. Not all of these are actual action items with physical improvement, some of them might be looking at things more as a planning or identifying infrastructure issues and that type of thing, and then moving those forward into actual projects. I do know that the DPW has been successful in getting some grant funding with regard to stormwater mitigation, BMPs that they're installing around town, so just, I think, staff being able to continue to keep up on this.
Mass Maritime has a really great emergency management program there, perhaps we could get an intern.
We've had great success with them in the past.
Yeah. But I appreciate all the work, thank you very much. I know it's, most all of it is ongoing, but if there are things that, that need to be addressed sooner, I think that these, obviously, a lot of these are critical issues that we need to make sure we're on top of. That's all, thank you.
Mark?
Kathy, if anybody that might be watching were interested in taking a look at this document, where could they find it on our website?
You would just go on the search and go Hazard Mitigation Plan, and it should come right up.
It should come right up?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you.
As well as the Municipal Vulnerability Plan, if you Google that or search that, it's on there as well.
It should bring you right to it.
Yep.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
I don't have any questions, I just want to thank you for your work and your ongoing progress in looking at all these various issues and collaborating with other town departments, and appreciate the, the work and the input and the knowledge of everyone that's participated in this.
As with most things in the town of Yarmouth, it really is a team effort, and all the different departments have great institutional knowledge, which really helps with these types of plans.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Public comment?
Oh yeah, is anyone in public want to be heard on this? There isn't really much of a public. Kurt Tierz is here, he's always here.
Will we guess?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. So Gulf Bond anticipation notes, I, who's got that, Dan?
It should be Ed Centio, if he's here.
Ed?
Got the summer haircut going.
Oh yes, okay, absolutely. Hello, everyone, I'm Ed Centio, Finance Director, Town of Yarmouth. What we're hoping to do today is get signatures from you on the bond anticipation note, which continues the short-term funding of the improvements at the Bayberry Hills Golf Course as well as the Bass River Restaurant. I think we had discussions about that last year. The fact that we're not doing a long-term bond for this is, this is a very small amount of money that we would bond. It would cost about $50,000 to bond it. We're hoping to wait until the golf department has their debt completely dropped off, so we can slot this in, potentially also tied to some other borrowing that we're trying to do, given that the golf department is, is managing their profit and loss. So those are the reasons why we continue to roll over a short-term bond, so.
Isn't it a higher rate when you do the short-term?
It's 2%.
And what's, what's a long-term?
A long-term would be about probably three and a half, 4% at this point in time.
It's actually been going down.
Right.
The municipal rates have been going down for the last month or two months.
Right, but that's what our, our bond counsel has let us know, our bond advisor.
So what's the total dollar for the project now that's been borrowed, and how much is this particular?
That includes both the Bass River renovation as well as the, I'm sorry, the Bass River Restaurant, as well as the Bayberry Course renovation.
Okay. So in, in just general terms, when do you expect that the, that drop-off will be there so that this amount gets financed long-term?
2023, and again, depending on the rates and other conditions and other borrowing that we do, we could actually pay principal, you know, throughout the year as, as we see how well the golf course is doing, and buy down the amount that we borrow each year, so we could actually continue to roll over the short-term notes, depending on what the long-term rates look like for another seven years, if, if we chose to do that. But, you know, conditions given that we're looking at a DPW garage, we're looking at, you know, some other potential borrowing, hopefully we can tie those together so that the expense per dollar is lower than if we're just borrowing $2 million. Just $2 million, that's a lot of money to the families out there, but, you know, from a municipal government standpoint, that's a relatively low amount to, to bond alone.
So if you were to do the short-term borrowing up to, let's say hypothetically, seven years, the only risk of that would be is if your long-term rates moved substantially?
That's correct.
Okay.
And what's the length of this?
This is a one-year short-term borrowing.
And we did a one-year last year, correct?
We did a one-year last year, correct.
All right, any, any other questions, Norm?
If we're at 2%, then, what, what is the amount that we have in the golf budget?
For the short-term borrowing?
For the short-term borrowing, are we in budget at 2%?
We are in the budget. This year, we paid $45,000, that rate was higher last year. This year, the rate is lower, we anticipate $39,000.
Okay, I guess, I guess what I'm thinking about is, you know, depending on timing, you know, the municipal rates are, they're going to go inverse to what happens with the stock market and the economy. And we're on the long end of the, the economy at this point.
Right.
You know, anything that's stretching out, anticipating bond placements, you know, three years from now, really is at high risk of, of entry, increases in rates.
Right.
So I guess I'm wondering if we should be budgeting at the, in golf at the, at the 3% or 4% level, and setting that money aside to cover for potential increases in the future?
And that would mean more subsidies from the general fund. So this, if we, because we got estimates for this, it would be an additional $200,000 to the golf department each year.
$200,000 for?
Paying up the principal and interest if we did a bond.
So there's no payments anticipated?
So we paid $45,000, or paid $45,000 in FY '19. Interest will be $39,000 plus principal of $80,000, $80, $90,000. We have to pay debt. Now we're at the point where we can't just do interest only, we actually have to start paying principal, and I'm hoping that we can address that at the Fall Town Meeting, given that we'll have some reserves. Hoping that the golf department won't go through all of the general fund subsidy, so we will have some subsidy at the end of this fiscal. So we will have some subsidy at the end of this fiscal year when we certify retained earnings. We can then use those retained earnings in, in the fall or in May town meeting to pay off what, I'm sorry, I think I said $80,000, $90,000 in, in principal that's owed. So we'll be paying $120,000 approximately versus paying $200,000. So we're not, we're, we're not paying $70,000 if we had done a long-term bond for this. And again, we're on, we're on, you know, some thin margins with the golf department.
Okay. I guess, I guess defer that for a later discussion as to.
And what, what we would need to do is, we would need to have that discussion as part of the budget process for 2021 so that we can build that into the 2021 budget. At this point in time, if we don't sign this, what we need to come up with is $1.9 million to pay off the outstanding principal, and we'll also look not very great in the bond market by not rolling over the bond. So what we need to do is we need to probably start getting into this discussion in August, September, about what we want to do long-term and how we might try to reserve funds. But again, it may mean that we would have to come up with more general fund subsidies depending on the results that the golf department has.
Okay.
Make a motion, we signed the anticipated note.
I'll second that.
And I've been given strict instructions not to let this leave my sight because there's some, the actual notes are in here, so.
Okay, all who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bring it down, we'll sign it right now.
Five different sections.
I'll take it home, I'll bring it to you tomorrow.
You're going to change the payee.
Change it. Change the rate.
Come here, man. Line up here. On this page.
Where?
Right here?
Yeah, right here.
Okay.
Blue ink requirement? Blue ink, no red.
All right, what about black? Nope.
You got the blue one? There, actually. Way above where Mark's at?
Yes.
You got 30 seconds to catch up on time, Mike.
Okay. And I'll hold you guys off my call, yes.
Mark can get ready.
You would, uh, nice. Mark, you okay?
I'm ready.
Thank you.
Oh, is there a signature back there too?
No.
Okay. One, two.
Thank you.
Not at all.
It's all the same thing?
They're all the same. You know, in government, nothing can be done in one form. It's going to be at least five or six, right?
FAA was 10.
That's fine.
If there's more. So if I change the payee, can I make that to a Canaan Islands account?
Got an email?
Are these getting down to you, Tracy, or?
Yes, sir, thank you. No.
No, no, cut it out. All right. You got your personal tax return in here, Mark?
I was going to place bets on whether or not you had a question on this particular topic.
That'll be next, public comment, they want disclosure of selectmen's tax return.
They should. I'm good with that.
You're not, you're not.
Thank you.
And it's only eight o'clock.
Woo-hoo! All right, Ed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You've got 90 minutes.
No, I got 90 seconds.
Just kidding.
Put it in the safe.
All right. See y'all done on that? Everybody all set with the bonds?
Yep.
Okay, next item, Higgins Crow Road.
Check them all.
Property. Mark and I were talking about this today. There's a, there's a property at that address. There was a fire there. And there is going to be some procedures pertaining to that property. But first, I guess Mark talked to town council, and there's a process that has to be adopted under Chapter 139, Section 1 of the general laws, where the property, it says, "The alderman or selectman in any city or town may after written notice to the owner of a burnt, dilapidated, or dangerous building or other structure."
Is that in our packet?
Uh, no. "Or to the owner of a vacant parcel of land, and after hearing, make and record in order, quote, 'adjudging it to be a nuisance to the neighborhood or dangerous and prescribing its disposition, alteration, or regulation.'" Now, I've been informed that town council wants us to adopt that process under Chapter 139, Section 1, is that correct?
That's correct.
So that you can proceed and deal with this property?
Uh, yes, sir. The, he told me to get approval. His direction was to gain, get approval from the Board of Selectmen to utilize the process for this particular parcel. So we don't get to use it town-wide. It's just, it ref, it's just in reference to 163 Higgins Crow Road.
To use this process for this particular property?
Correct.
And, and that would be, it would be limited to that property?
Correct.
Okay.
Can you read it again? I don't.
Yeah, it says, well, it says alderman. We don't have alderman or selectmen. So it's "selectmen in any town may after written notice to the owner of a burnt, dilapidated, or dangerous building or other structure, or his authorized agent, or to the owner of a vacant parcel," or it's not vacant, this has a structure. "And after hearing, make and record in order, adjudging it to be a nuisance to the neighborhood or dangerous and prescribing its disposition, alteration, or regulation." So I think upon adoption of this, this would allow Mark to judge it to be a nuisance to the neighborhood and/or dangerous.
Didn't it say hearing?
It says, "and after a hearing." It doesn't prescribe what type of hearing that is and who it's before. But it does say the selectmen or his authorized agent. So I would assume Mark would be the authorized agent.
So what actually is the process? That, that would be undertaking after this action?
What would you intend to do, Mark, after adoption of this process for this property?
It's actually a little more, it's very confusing. I've been chasing the owner of this parcel because it went into foreclosure the week after the fire.
The fire, by the way, the fire occurred about a year ago, correct?
Correct. It was just over a year ago.
The property's still burned and it's still on the property, on the land?
It's posted, no, it's posted as a dangerous structure. But the, I finally, within the past couple of months, was able to get ahold of the realtor who refuses to disclose the owner of the parcel. It's a, it's an investment firm that doesn't want to be identified. So they had agreed to come to me with the demolition permit to take it down themselves. Then they got into taxes, there are, there are title issues with it, and they can't take the thing down just yet. As I was speaking to the realtor last Friday, he said that they were trying to locate a contractor to board it up, which is technically making it safe, altering it or, or to make it safe so that people can't get into it. So I guess people are getting into it according to the neighbor. So according to town council, he can get a judgment against the property, and we can do what we need to do with it if we want to take it down, if we'd prefer to board it up. And then we get to, the town would actually get to put a lien against the, on the property. I'm still hoping I can get the realtor to just board it up and I don't have to utilize the process because I've never used this process. So this is new to me.
But you've been, how, how long have you been engaged in these efforts to try to resolve this since the fire?
I've been reaching out, trying to find somebody. And the letter that I sent was back in December, and, and they received it. I have the receipt that they received a letter, but I got no response.
So we'd be able to, for whatever action we had to take to make it safe, we would be able to then turn around and put a lien to recover whatever funds we've expended to do so?
That's correct. I believe with interest.
So you're looking for the board to begin the process of providing notice, having a public hearing, and then at least begin that process?
I don't believe that there is a public hearing required.
No, it doesn't say anything about a, it says, it says, um, "And after a hearing," it doesn't say it has to be a public hearing.
What the, well, to me, it would appear that to do something without a public hearing would be a bit.
Well, I mean, it is posted that on here, it's given dual notice to the public.
So there would be a public notice of some sort? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying we've notified basically the public that this would be a part of our discussion. So it doesn't require advertisement and a public hearing. What, what different would we do in a hearing if it doesn't have to be?
I think it's the process of serving notice and giving them a chance to add, it's, it's just another step, another way to cover ourselves.
Again, the statute doesn't require that the selectmen necessarily perform these things. It says, "or, or his authorized," it should say there, but the statute says, "or his authorized agent."
Why's it got to be his?
I guess, you know, to.
It's just the way language was historically. And the statutes, believe it or not, Tracy, you have a great point, and I agree with you, but the statutes are still addressed that way for some reason. Should say his slash her.
I, yeah, I'm, I'm really concerned with doing something that is not a public hearing with regard to public, or private property.
Well, I, I have a suggestion, Norm. Maybe what we could do is authorize the process, and then obviously, before it goes forward, you'd have to check with town council and make sure all the.
So what the hearing is, yeah?
Yeah, well, that was the town council's.
And we'll proceed according to town council's instructions.
Those was town council's exact words, "We utilize the process. Get permission to utilize the process."
Okay.
If, if that's, that's the only thing you need, I would make a recommendation that we, I don't even have the statute in front of me, but we authorize Mark to.
We authorize.
Permission to utilize the process, the provision.
Provided by general laws, Chapter 139, Section 1.
Regarding nuisance, this, this particular nuisance property.
That's 163 Higgins Crow Road.
West Yarmouth, yes.
That your motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and with the understanding, you know, you'll, you'll talk to town council and make sure whatever processes involve, whether it be public or private, is followed.
Absolutely.
To the statute, okay. You have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All who's in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed?
Aye, I'm opposed.
Okay. Three in favor, one against. You all set?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So update.
We just cut back up.
Update to the DY school agreement.
Great.
Where do you want to start with that?
Where do you want to start, right, talking about our vote in executive session to?
Trying to find that, I'm trying to find that email that I, I was given.
Chris had it, right?
It's not it, that's the decision.
Is it right there?
Oh yeah, here it is. I had it right in front of me, Dan, thanks. The last offer that Dennis made, that Yarmouth responded to, our response was not made public, and the board tonight voted to make that response public. So I'll just read the portion of the offer and the response to that particular portion because that's the way the communication back to the, um, council, I guess it was, for, for the town of Dennis. Wasn't that who the response was made to?
Yes, the offer, or the original Dennis offer was related to us council, from the air council, that's correct.
Jay Talerman. So this was the response back from Jay Talerman on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, correct?
Correct.
Okay, the first part was, this is the Dennis, I'll read Dennis' offer and then Yarmouth's response, so it'll be clear. Dennis offered, first point, "The Dennis Board of Selectmen will place an article on the warrant to seek an appropriation to fund the fiscal year to 2020 Dennis-Yarmouth Regional School Budget at Dennis's foundation enrollment percentage of 31.3459%." This is the Yarmouth response. "The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen agree that the use of a foundation enrollment percentage should be the basis to determine student cost sharing. However, use of the foundation enrollment percentage needs to also incorporate fixed district costs that are part of the administration of a school district. The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen support the use of an agreed-upon foundation enrollment percentage that should be a part of a multi-year rolling average, for example, five years, coupled with the addition of fixed district costs, subject to further negotiations. These fixed district costs should also include an escalator for inflation."
Sorry. What's the matter with my phone here?
Second item, the Dennis offer. "The Dennis Board of Selectmen will place an article on the warrant to seek an appropriation to fund the feasibility study at Dennis's foundation enrollment percentage of 31.3459%." This is the Yarmouth response. "The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen respectfully requests that the Dennis Board of Selectmen consider using the foundation enrollment percentage effective in October of 2016. The district received permission from the Massachusetts School Building Authority to expand the feasibility study to include the Wixson School on October 6, 2016, and the foundation enrollment at that time would be the more appropriate measure of contribution." Item number three, the Dennis offer. "The Dennis Board of Selectmen will place an article on the warrant to seek an advisory vote of support for an amendment of the agreement to support funding for the new middle school project at Dennis's foundation enrollment percentage of 31.3459% contingent upon compliance with statutory procedure, including preparation and approval of an amendment by the school committee, approval of the amendment by DESE, which is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and approval of the amendment at both towns, town meetings." The Yarmouth response. "The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen support an amendment to the agreement that uses as the capital share the same share that was used during the most recent significant district capital improvement, the renovation of the Dennis-Yarmouth High School." Four, Dennis offer. "The Dennis Board of Selectmen will take a public vote of unanimous support and will advocate in support of these articles." The Yarmouth response. "The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen will support publicly the agreement language as amended in our response as may be further negotiated and finalized." Number five, Dennis offer. "The Dennis Board of Selectmen will agree to participate in negotiations to amend the agreement to include Dennis funding the operational budget at each town's foundation enrollment percentage." The Yarmouth response. "The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen agree to participate in negotiations to amend the agreement to include each town funding its student share based on the use of an average of foundation enrollment as set forth above, coupled with a fixed district cost. as set forth above, coupled with a fixed district cost factor that is calibrated for inflation. Finally, the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen would agree to the dismissal of the lawsuit, pending a, a successful vote in support of the amended agreement by the Dennis Yarmouth Regional School District Committee, each town meeting, and approved by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So that was the offer, and those were the responses. And, um, I don't know if anybody has anything else they want to add. Tracy?
Um, well, I know that they were able to say their part at, at their last meeting, and we weren't able to because we hadn't voted to release our minutes. Um, you know, unfortunately, we're in a tight timeline, and I think that there, we have not actually received a formal response to our, uh...
Counteroffer.
Our counteroffer, um, but after watching their meeting, it was somewhat said that, you know, they wouldn't be able to achieve our requests within the time they allotted. I think that they were trying to have a special town meeting before the end of, um, June, and they didn't feel like they would be able to achieve that with what our requests were. The only other thing I think that I can add at this point is that, um, as you know, Norm and I and Dan went, um, last Thursday to, uh, the DESE, who basically facilitated a meeting, um, that's really what it was. They had some background information, um, and of course, it was good to, to talk, and we did talk, and we, um, agreed to continue to talk. I think the one ask that we, we did ask was, um, for them to consider a formal mediation, and so they would go back to their board as we have, um, also. So, you know, we look forward to hearing from them, I think, at this point in time about, um, either the offer that we put on the table, or their response from their board about entering into formal mediation.
Thank you. Norm, you were at that meeting, do you have anything you want to say?
Uh, no, it, uh, you know, I, I, um, DESE, just after reviewing, uh, some of the background and, and, uh, information that had been submitted, indicated it wasn't their purpose to try to, uh, negotiate or to, to, um, uh, bring about a negotiation at that point. They indicated, uh, they, they wanted to, uh, help, uh, the towns continue negotiations and, um, asked if, if both towns were, were receptive to doing that, and, and, uh, both Yarmouth and Dennis indicated they were willing to do so. And, um, I think we indicated that we were willing to enter into new, to mediation, uh, on the agreement. And, um, you know, I'm not sure if we need to vote on that as a board, uh, to support that. I think that's probably appropriate at this stage. Um, and, um, Dennis indicated that, uh, they would bring that back to their board and, and finance committee. Um, and, uh, so apparently, they need to clear it with two boards before they would agree. Um, so I, I, other than that, I thought the meeting covered, uh, covered a lot of ground, but, um, didn't really, other than the, uh, agreement to come back to the boards for mediation, there, there weren't any specific dates decided on for meetings. Uh, it was kind of a general discussion of, uh, when, when that might take place. But, you know, there was a recognition certainly of the, uh, June 30th deadline, but, um, I'm, I'm not sure whether anything could be accomplished in that timeframe in any case.
Well, the only other thing I'd like to add to that is, um, at last night's school committee meeting, there was a request from Dennis for an extension. I know we have been told, uh, no extensions...
From Dennis?
From Dennis, and the school committee voted, um, to request an extension. I think that we should go on the record in formally voting here as well. Um, whether they do or they won't, I, they, I'm, I'm not sure, but I think that, um, as well as, as the mediation piece, um, so I'll make a motion that this board agree or, uh, commit as, um, a group to formal mediation with regard to our regional school district agreement, and to also request from, uh, the school committee, through the school committee to the MSBA, uh, that we request, uh, an appropriate time extension until we can, uh, achieve that.
I'll second that.
Okay, so your motion is to support in concept arbitration and to support...
Mediation, not arbitration.
I'm sorry, I always say that gets, you're right, mediation, yeah, arbitration would be a binding thing, mediation, and, um...
That wouldn't be bad either.
To support an extension of time that may be made by, what, either the, either the town of Dennis or the school committee or both?
No, MSBA.
Right.
Right, an extension of time.
We're asking, we're asking that...
No, I know, but the, but initiated by either the town of Dennis or the school committee or both.
Well, the school committee, I think, the school committee, it's their, it's their...
They're the ones that are gonna remake the request. Okay, so it, we support an extension of time for the MSBA funding made by the, um, school committee?
Correct.
Correct. So we have a motion and a second to that effect?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, any further discussion on that?
No need to.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So that carries by, um, a four to zero vote. Anybody, um, Dan, you want to be, uh, add anything to that, to the update?
No, I think, um, that was covered, uh, quite well. I, I would say, um, just one perspective on that, the DESE, what they, um, were able to give us both, to both parties, is that, uh, there's more of a global, uh, look to these agreements across the Commonwealth. And I think, uh, it would be fair to say that, um, as this is very complicated and is bogged down quite a bit in certain detail, to be able to have, uh, a fresh set of eyes from an organization that, uh, tries to facilitate sound agreements across the Commonwealth would be really beneficial to the negotiations as it relates, they had offered many different ways to tie in foundation enrollment, uh, on operating costs with some other factors for fixed costs, because they recognized that the administration of a district is critical, and you couldn't do that on your own. And one of the interesting takes that I thought on that also was on the, the different viewpoint other districts have taken about capital share in, in actual, uh, seats, uh, taken by October 1st, coupled with wealth factors, including equalized value, to make the capital share, uh, fair on both sides. And I think, um, that perspective is, uh, something that, uh, both sides would say would probably be welcomed.
And, and they did agree to give, um, or forward, uh, a few names of potential, I don't know if it was people that they've had success with in the past, but, uh, names of potential mediators to Dan and Les.
I think, I think people should be clear, however, that regardless of anything that could materialize through, um, negotiations by the Dennis Board of Selectmen and the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, it still has to go through the school committee, who may or may not support that agreement. They could, they could support it, they could modify it, or they could fail to support it. Um, and ultimately, beyond that, it would have to be approved by town meeting in both towns of Dennis and Yarmouth. So I don't want anybody to think that we can meet in a room and come up with some kind of quick solution to the differences that we have, because we can't.
I think one thing that was pointed out, and I think it, um, it's helpful, that, um, they were very, um, pleased that they were able to make an offer, that they had, had made an offer. I think that that was, um, something that was very productive in terms of, uh, where we've been in the past. And, um, you know, they, they felt that their offer was not an end point, but something that could get us where we probably needed to go, and, um, that, that they felt that, um, we were fairly close. You know, they, they kept saying, you know, we're, we're not that far away. So I was encouraged.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on then. Boarding committee actions. Selectmen Forrest, do you have any appointments for us?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair, and fellow board members. Um, the first item to move on is an appointment to the Disability Commission. I'm recommending that we appoint, um, Gail Sharette as a regular member to the town of Yarmouth's Disability Commission. This is an appointment to fill a three-year term, which runs through January 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carries unanimously. Thank you. Uh, the next appointment is for the Recycling and Solid Waste Advisory Committee. I'm recommending that we appoint Michael Smith as a member, uh, to the town of Yarmouth's Recycling and Solid Waste Advisory Committee. This is an appointment to fill an unexpired term running through February 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, carries unanimously. Uh, the next item is an appointment to the Water Resources Advisory Committee. Um, I'm recommending that we appoint George Perkins to be a regular member of the town of Yarmouth's Water Resources Advisory Committee. Um, this is an appointment that will be running till August 2020. It's to fill an unexpired term.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries unanimously. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mark. All right, next item is the approval of minutes of November 14th, 2018, November 20th, says 2019, I don't think so, 2018.
2019.
And December 4th, 2018, and executive session minutes of April 23rd, 2019, May 4th, 2019, and May 14th, 2019.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes listed and hold, um, the executive session minutes. Approve and release the other ones.
I also see a December 4th in the packet.
2018?
2018?
Mm-hmm, it's on the agenda.
Was that listed?
Yeah, December 4th, 2018, Norm was mentioned. Um, so Tracy's motion is, well, why don't we do them separate? Why don't we say, do we approve the minutes of November 14th, November 20th, and December 4th, 2018?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, now Tracy's motion is on the executive minutes of April 23rd, uh, May 4th, and May 14th, 2019. You want to approve and hold, Tracy?
Don't think any of these are settled, am I?
No, that's correct.
Okay, so yes, approve and hold.
So Tracy makes a motion, approve and hold. Norm seconds it. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, that, those are all set, it's approved. Upcoming agenda is the next matter. So the next regularly scheduled meeting, we won't be having a regular meeting until July 16th, is that right?
That's correct.
Whoa, and Chris, when, when are, he'll be here for a while? Okay, so this isn't your last meeting. Okay, good.
When will we be scheduling, um, discussion of goals for the, uh, next fiscal year?
That'll likely come up, uh, probably on the 16th. We haven't had a chance to populate the agenda yet.
Okay.
How would you like to have that discussion? Based on Invisio, is it more of a reflection of the board's high-level goals?
Traditionally, we submit our thoughts...
Usually, yeah, it's going forward, right?
Right.
Is that what you're talking about? I think, I think, uh, Chris's question was, how do we stand in terms of what, your question was performance on existing goals?
Or how would you like the 16th goal discussion set up? Would you like to leverage what you have in Invisio? Do you want to use, I, I guess I'm just looking for a little bit of guidance on how we can best make the, we can make the best use of your time that...
I think looking at an updated report, maybe we can get our monthly reporting from that, so we can see the status, and maybe we can build our goals around that. But typically, we, in advance of the meeting, we would put our thoughts together to the chairman, and then, um, you know, whether we, then that way we, we have something to work through during the meeting. But I think the Invisio thing and the status and seeing where we're, where we're behind and where we're being successful, so maybe we need to change things around would be helpful.
It sounds reasonable to me.
Yeah, what you, Mark?
That sounds fine. Yeah, I think the, the challenge that I have with the Invisio is, is figuring if there are other ways to present the information that's a bit more readable and digestible. That's sort of in the back of my mind as I'm reading through this, is there another way to present this which makes it even more user-friendly? I don't know. I don't know if there are other formats or approaches, but, uh, there may be some value in exploring that. Um, otherwise, we'll just have to work off of what we've got. But I think it might be helpful to at least see if there's some other way to make it easier to sort of digest and review and, and grasp all that stuff.
If I could do that, and if there's any feedback you'd like to provide offline or shoot me an email?
Yeah, I'd love to take a look at some options offline and offer recommendations.
Well, I think staying at the high level, though, um, is critical, because typically, you know, as people know, we, we create basically the backbone of which staff then supplements, and I think getting into the weeds would be, um, not as productive as we've been in the past, so...
I'm not suggesting we get into the weeds, I'm suggesting finding a more visually easier-to-read format for what we're getting now.
I haven't seen any of the reports. Have we, have we gotten any of the monthly reports yet?
They get emailed out, but I can, um, I can double-check to make sure that they are, it's working as it's expected.
Well, I don't know if I've seen that.
I've also asked to have stuff printed out for me to take a look at as well.
Yeah, but I thought we were going to be getting like a, kind of a monthly...
I established our email schedule, um, for the board members, and, um, I assumed it was working appropriately, but...
Well, I'm getting reports and I, like I said, yeah. I just can't remember if it's at my request or if they're coming automatically. I'd have to check.
Do you get them? Is it just me?
I don't recall.
Okay. Check on that. We had, we had some issues with the emails over the past...
With the email stuff, yeah. Tom Casper.
There's some phone issues too, from what I'm hearing. Not, not for me, but...
We're limping along in some technology areas.
That might be a goal.
It is.
So where are we on the agenda?
We're on approval of minutes, I mean, I'm sorry, on the agenda review, I'm sorry. Anyone?
Something upcoming too. I know Jeff Colby had talked about a little bit of the improvements on Center Street, so I've got a work group to give me some recommendations to you about, for the, um, the parking situation down there. So I anticipate that that would strike sometime in July, language for regulations for that.
Have you had any comments on that, while?
I haven't had, I personally haven't seen anything come through yet.
Yeah, well, I sent you an email.
Yeah, I mean, other than from the board, but nothing from the public, yeah.
Well, that, that was a conversation in my front yard.
I got a, I got a picture.
You got a picture?
Yeah.
Take it right out tomorrow.
Uh, the other thing, uh, I guess, um, would be an update on golf, uh, and we anticipate having their fiscal reports.
Oh, yeah, that'll be good.
So July 16th, I've asked, uh, the interim golf director to provide to the board a, uh, year-end report to you that talks about membership, the metrics on that, year-over-year comparison, financial performance, revenue and expenses as they see it at that point.
Okay, will we be able to get an, an update on where we stand with regard to the software and marketing?
The contract will be executed shortly with a starting date of July 1, so...
Okay, for?
For the consultant that we're going to engage for that.
Oh, you're talking about software?
Yeah, it's all part of that package.
Oh.
Yep.
That the software for running the golf course is part of that, our...
That's correct, yeah.
Part of that RFP or part of...
Yeah, so one of the problems that we had with the T-Snap that everybody seemed to like so much, it has never been procured by a public golf course in Massachusetts. So that's a problem for us, um, to find the best solution. And so one of the things that we wanted to do before we... And so one of the things that we wanted to do before we committed, because obviously you didn't want to go down this road on a software program and then have to retrench because you made some kind of miscue on it or didn't do everything that it wanted to do, this consultancy is going to be part of the process of what would be the best fit for point-of-sale operation software for the Town of Yarmouth.
Okay.
It gives us a more global perspective. I mean, no disrespect to the players, but I think particularly with the challenges like you just heard with Ed Centio tonight, the challenges that Yarmouth Public Golf faces are pretty significant in the financial arena. And I would feel more comfortable managing through that based on, you know, what I'd call a collaborative coming to the minds on certain items that are tried and true nationally, not just here. And one of the red flags you have in procurement is if nobody else has done it in Massachusetts, that would be a challenge to us to be the first one. So I was interested in having a system that we didn't have to build from scratch, that we'd have to own and own the repair on it, but take something that was already successful somewhere else and implement it. So we'll see what the consultant and the team comes up with as it relates. Ultimately, if we decide to go with T-Snap, the time to transition over to that would be not mid-season, but sometime in the offseason. But the procurement situation, we're probably going to need some significant guidance with the Inspector General's office to be able to get that procurement if that's the way we decide to go off the ground.
What's the challenge with...
The challenge is the dollar values involved. So my understanding with T-Snap is that they take a percentage of your daily take. So normally, when you would do something like that, that's not a problem for a private country club. But in a public country club or in a public arena, the vendors, you know, how do you value the highest and best offer in something like that? When they're taking, as your revenue grows, because you've had more people come through, their percentage of the take of that grows as well. And it's not been something that we've seen be procured here in Massachusetts under that fashion.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Is it used in any other municipal environment?
Well, not... They were not able to provide me a municipal environment outside of Massachusetts. I did not see that. But specifically, Massachusetts has some very stringent regulations on procurement, probably more so than many other states around. So that is definitely a challenge for us to come up with a solicitation that's fair and equitable so that any vendor on the market could respond to it.
Okay. There's been some public discussion and actually some uncertainty and confusion about the RFPs that are outstanding on golf. Can we get like a summary, a little bit of an explanation at the same meeting on that?
Yeah. You know, I mean, to your point, I recently had a conversation with Selectman Holcomb on this. So the crux of the matters, and I think you heard a good point of it tonight, is that part of the technical assistance that we were looking to get was not only with the point-of-sale software, but also a five-year business plan that we could adopt and be confident in those numbers. You know, and in the business model that we have in golf, it not only has daily fee players, it has membership associated with it. It has revenue from the food and beverage operation and revenue from the pro-shops. So based on all of the liabilities that we had heard, you know, between tonight and in the past, you know, what's... What does each one of those business units have to perform in a realistic fashion to get to where we need to be every year going forward to five years? Whether it's to pay back the note we just heard about tonight, pay back the town's loan to the golf department. But the idea that, I mean, since I've been here, we've literally gone about this in an approach that is, you know, every year, we kind of put the hands together and hope for a spring, and we got some numbers, and we'll increase memberships. That's just not a way to run something that's a multimillion-dollar corporation. The idea with this would be if one of those four legs is not performing or two of those four legs isn't performing, we would know that early on and be able to go to the board, potentially for recommendation, to do something different. It could increase membership costs or something along that line. I mean, there's a few things, you know, going in this conversation. The annual membership is a... It's a good deal, and it's less than what our competitive marketplace off Cape has for public membership. So we know that going into this conversation. So if we're going to pay everything back that we owe and plan for the future, how do those other three other legs to that stool have to perform to get us there? And I think that it wasn't lost on me that, right now, we're asking people that have never successfully run restaurants to provide a dollar value as to year-over-year growth on a restaurant. Now, we did hire a restaurant consultant. He did give us some recommendations to not only grow sales, but also more importantly, while you're growing sales, how do you make the entity more efficient? And we're going to implement some of those measures such that you are making the most of the dollars that you have invested in the organization. Now, part of that assessment may include, down the line, putting an RFP out to see if there's a private operator that would operate these things. My understanding is on the Cape, we're kind of standing alone as a public entity operating a food and beverage establishment. This is a business that's very difficult in the private sector, never mind saddling it with all the issues that we have in public sector situations. So that's two parts. Point-of-sale, the five-year business plan, and then pretty much what I would call the daily size-up of business operations that the present management structure of golf has able to go to technical resources to not only evaluate the operation, but also to help implement the five-year business plan. That's going to be quite a heavy lift on that. So that's ultimately the three things that the solicitation provide for us. And that's a fee-for-structure. So much like propping up your business for the first time, it's an organization that will support us if we need to run a few ideas by them. I mean, we have a lot of these discussions about running this business amongst ourselves. But I'm certainly not a golf director, and we have talented individuals within golf. But I think the dollar values and the stakes are so high that I'd like to calibrate every decision that we make from a national brand or a significant regional brand to indicate that we're not off course. Now, it may come out that we're validated on a lot of these things, and that would be a good thing. But right now, I'm not comfortable enough with any of the legs of the stool to confidently say to you, in five years from now, we've dug a deeper hole for ourselves than we've got right now. I'd feel much better if collaboratively, the team works with a consultant, with a brand, to be able to put the plan together. Then I can put that in front of you, and I can feel better about putting that in front of you.
I attended the membership meeting that occurred yesterday. And there's still a lot of questions, lack of understanding of what an enterprise fund is and why it exists and whether it should exist. And, you know, to me, it's very frustrating with regard to that because why don't we just simply put that whole legal structure to the side and just simply say, look, we need to run an operation that is self-sustaining, can pay for its own capital, and be done with the philosophical discussion about, oh gee, you know, if it can't pay for itself, the taxpayers ought to pay for it. And rather than continually debate that issue, just commit ourselves to making the operation successful. And, you know, I just find some of the continuing dialogue to be unproductive, headed in the wrong direction. And, you know, so... And I think there was some indication that members believe that this board is unsupportive of golf and is going in a quote-unquote "different" direction than the Golf Enterprise Committee. And I find that troubling since the Golf Enterprise Committee is an advisory committee to the board. So the impression that we're headed in different directions just kind of says to me that people don't really understand the Golf Enterprise Committee either. Now, I could be taking isolated comments, but, you know, when you hear a comment like that made and then, yeah, you know, kind of, yeah, yeah, you know, from a few other people in the audience, that it's... To me, it's troubling that we're still dealing with some of those administrative issues. And that kind of draws away from the focus needed on determining how do we best market to our own residents as well as to the general public for public play? And how do we make... Create an organization that is profit-making and efficient? You know, clearly, the golf operations team has created conditions on the courses that are... Gain high approval ratings from residents. And when I talk to people on the course that are from... That are not residents, they're very complimentary as well. So I think we're doing a lot of the right things from that perspective. I think we have two and a half courses that are extremely high-quality. I personally played... I played Bayberry principally, but I played the Blue Course the other day. I've never seen it in the condition that it's in now. It is superb visually as a links course with the grasses. And it's just wonderful. The fairways are superb, and the greens were immaculate. And I didn't sample the traps, thankfully. But my point is, I think we've got a lot of positives, and I think if we can move away from discussions about administrative items and focus on what we... The five-year plan is very important, getting something in front of our board and that everybody has committed to operationally, so... Enough on golf.
As soon as I have something in more concrete to give you on that, I'll give you an update. If we can get it in by the 16th meeting, I'll do that. But certainly shortly thereafter, we should have enough to go on, on that related topic. I just would, you know, caution folks that are watching at home, you know, golf is in a challenging situation across the country. And our municipal golf is hamstrung by a lot of different cost drivers that other private entity golf doesn't have. And the idea that, you know, we're one of the few communities that hasn't done a huge public subsidy on it off the levy, I mean, you know, I'd love to be able to say we're in a position to provide some support, but you know the levy as well as I do, where there's not a lot of extra money laying around there. So I think it's critically important that everybody on together on this. And when the consulting gets executed, we'll have a focus group put together to talk about what the best strategy is for the next five years so that we aren't talking about golf in a negative fashion five years from now. We're talking about a really good success story because to Selectman Holcomb's point, I agree, I hear nothing but fabulous commentary about the play of golf right now and how everything looks. But we've got to get people through the door to support that membership.
Okay. Anything else on the agenda? Okay. Let's move on to individual items. Start with you, Mark.
I don't have any tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Norm?
No. Nothing else.
Tracy?
I just want to talk about the school committee meeting last night, and I know it was at your place. The assessments were voted once again. There was information that Dan put out. They got the letter today from the district. They voted the... I guess there was six or seven... Six options or so that was discussed. And so basically, they sent the foundation enrollment portion back to the parents.
That was the Senate version, wasn't it?
It was the Senate version of yes, because the minimum contributions changed a little bit. And so I'm trying to think. Senate. I think it maybe it was... Let me just make sure I have this. I took pictures of the slides that were offered. So basically, we've met our... We've... To their assessment, we've met our requirement. Not sure about any action that this board would have to take based on the assessments that they...
My understanding preliminarily with conversation with council, that if the number holds, we're good. We wouldn't need any further action.
So there was a lot of discussion last night about whether or not a town meeting would be required to deviate from the regional agreement and things like that. So I'm not sure how Dennis will perceive that.
I think Dennis would have to have a town meeting.
Well, they perhaps would for the funding part, but the question is, because they're deviating from the regional agreement with foundation, would we both have to have that approved by our... So what it really means is, so the 35,239,697 is our total assessment. And it is, we've approved $58,738 more than that already. So basically, to us, there's, so to speak, a credit. But to Dennis, for foundation, they're going to be looking for $311,166. There's a lot of discussion. I won't get into the discussion, but that's where we are.
How is it that... It doesn't make any difference to us because the amount that we voted covers the amount that they're billing.
The Senate budget changed the minimum contribution, which...
But listen to my question. How does the regional district propose a solution that is not in accordance with the regional agreement?
Well, that's what I'm saying, whether or not we'd have to approve.
Without amending, without the agreement having been amended?
Agreement. Right. I mean, can they just simply say, oh, here's what we think you ought to pay? Why didn't they do 35% then?
We've... We have deviated in the past. I know there were years where we had a kind of an agreement on the side that wasn't specific, but the two towns had that in advance of the assessments. So I'm not really sure where this stands and how it will go. I do know after the discussion that, you know, they were very careful to not... There were some members that wanted to bring the original operating budget and the $274,000 delta still back to Yarmouth, and that motion failed. So either way, there's going to have to be some kind of town meeting action, I think, you know, at some point in time, whether or not we can do it in the fall to agree to deviate or whether or not we need to. I think Dan has some advice on that.
Yeah, no, we'll look into that. My understanding of the law was if you did it and had language that was different than the statutory formula, then you would... Both towns would have to adopt the same language, much like we tried to do. In a precursory glance with it today with Jay, he didn't seem to indicate that that was the case. But I'll go back to council. I'll talk to the school department, too, and see if what they're ruling from their school council was...
Yeah. We were meeting on something else, but he did discuss that just as a tangent with me and said the same thing. He said, well, we're covered. I don't think we have to have a town meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it's much better for us than if we had been in a delta that was negative to us, for sure.
But, you know, regardless of whether we do or not, Dennis has got to approve the other 311,166.
That's right.
So... No further comment on that.
I have no further comment.
All right. Anybody else have anything on individual items? The only thing I'd bring up is on Father's Day, I went to the annual event at Bray Farm. There was a good... It was a cloudy day, so it was great. People didn't go to the beach. They were there. It was heavily attended. They had the sheep shearing and a bunch of other things, silent auctions. Looked like they had a good crowd. I can't, you know, speak highly enough of those people. They're volunteers. They're taking care of an important town resource, raising money for all the feed and other things that they need to run the farm. All volunteer labor, all great people that are providing dedicated service to the community for which I not only acknowledge them, but thank them because it's a fabulous town resource. All right. So let's move on to town administrator items next.
On the consent agenda, we have some donations. It's pretty standard if I could have a motion to accept that.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That's Carrie's town administrator updates.
Yeah. You know, I do have one update related... Yeah, you know, I do have one update related to the Bray Farm. We were communicating back and forth a little bit about the donkey wedding. Remember the donkey wedding?
Yes.
Wildly popular.
I saw, um...
Get out, really?
Absolutely.
Colvin, did, the woman who was here doing the media update for the, she did a nice video on it.
Yeah.
Yep.
If you go to the Cape Media website, you can...
Yep, they were very happy with it, and I think there's plans for other weddings in the future, so stay too, right?
So we could be a donkey wedding capital, huh?
There could be other animals involved. I don't know.
There you go.
Bring your donkeys.
I, um...
And a little team.
I wanted to recognize real quick, there's a donation in the consent agenda that we have. It's for $100. We get it twice a year from the Association of Federally Retired Employees, and what a wonderful group. They come and they use Town Hall to meet on a regular basis, but they come from all over southeastern Massachusetts, and twice per year, they meet at the Irish Village to have a commemorative luncheon, and we've been lucky enough to be part of that. But what an absolute fabulous group of folks, and they do pay us for that, and they want to make sure that we get the check. So I handpick it up every year to deliver it. One year, I think we had misplaced it or something, and it was a bit of an issue, but this year, I safely grabbed it and turned it in. But it's just one of those things that goes on, on a day-to-day basis here, sometimes that is under the radar screen, and it's just something that the people should know how much this group thinks of the town folks here in Yarmouth. They're very appreciative, wonderful people, and we look forward to seeing them twice a year.
You have anything on water resources?
Yeah, water resources, there's another DHY meeting Friday. We have been working through some iterations. I'll get that updated to you in July on the agreement language. House counsel, as it's going through special legislation counsel up there, they had some issues with some language. I believe we've worked it all out. Jay's in receipt of it. And remember in July, as part of the quarterly update as water commissioners, we'll work in just a brief update as to where we are in the agreement language with the idea that sometime in the fall, September, we'd love to bring the three towns together to have a meeting to advance the agreement language to a fall town meeting.
So which one of the two groups is meeting on Friday?
It's the DHY group that meets. That's Kurt's part of that group, is a Yarmouth delegate, so is Rich Manvoodoo, myself, Jeff Colby. We meet with Dennis reps and Harwich reps.
Yeah, so what time you meeting?
That, I believe, is scheduled to go at nine o'clock. Kurt at, usually at the Dennis Town Hall.
Dennis, okay.
Yep.
Okay, you don't have anything to add on the school agreement over and above what we talked about, do you?
No, I don't.
Okay, and how about the Matta Key School Project? Nothing new there?
Nothing new.
Cape Tech?
Cape Tech, I've been part of the negotiation team up there, but the building is taking great, great shape. The contractor's going very rapidly. They're talking about a project that should come in much sooner than they thought it would be, so everybody's really pleased with the progress so far. If you haven't seen it, it's probably the largest public construction in these parts in a long time, so it's quite something to see.
Their website has a lot of information on the project.
Yeah, unbelievable.
Progress.
And lastly, anything on DPW facility?
No, that group has been working away, the building committee, Eric's part of that. I do know that the last time I checked in with them, they're looking to get a finalized number to go to town meeting within the fall for construction of the building. So there should be bids in hand at that point in time, but there'll be a presentation to you sometime well in advance as to where they ended up.
Okay, we have a motion adjourned?
Sub moved.
Second? Anyone, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We adjourned.
Nobody's opposed.